Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 7th special meeting of the IURA Board. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We have all agency members present and Siobhan Hall present remotely, per the city's local law authorizing exceptions for remote participation. Before we resume the public hearing, any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right. With that, it's after nine, so the public hearing has automatically reopened from our adjournment. And the first, I'll turn it over to Aneesa.
Okay. Well, first, I think we have a new owl in the room. And Lisa, the live stream to the city of Ithaca isn't working. Yeah, I have to have a login. So I'm sorry, everyone, if you just give me a few minutes. We did do a lot of troubleshooting this.
I think it would be a disclosure at the meeting if Fernando attends. So not at this meeting.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience and getting an inside view of, yes, what it's like here. So we don't have any people in the waiting room or in the Zoom room for public comments.
Great. And then no immediate disclosures of conflict of interest new to this meeting. So with that, we will invite up our friends from Reuse.
All right, good morning. Thanks for having us back. So we're here this morning to talk about our Reuse Materials Access Program. I'm Robin Elliott. I'm the COO. I'm joined here by Abby, who's our development coordinator. And we're going to tell you a little bit more about the program. So we first started this program in 2017. And it first started as a small program, and it's gotten bigger steadily each year. So now it has over 40 partners, agencies that we work with. And we're currently assisting an average of 75 households monthly. And we're providing materials to local households in need, along with local delivery services. We haven't submitted a request for funding to the IRA for this program before. However, with increasing referrals each year to the program, we're seeking new funding sources to keep up with demand. If we do receive less funding than we ask for, we understand you guys have a lot of requests this year, as you always do. What we would first do is look to fundraise our need elsewhere. If we're unable to do that, the next thing we would do is consider reducing the maximum gift card size we grant to each household in order to manage it. Human service agencies refer clients to us each through a private online form, allowing us to respond to referrals and create gift cards very quickly. We usually respond within a few days or a week maximum. This quick turnaround and low barrier access is unique among social service programs. We often get a lot of really great feedback about that. We don't require IDs or other program markers. Once individuals are in our centers, their gift cards look the same as if they had purchased the gift card or received them as gifts. So we welcome and treat these shoppers with the same dignity as any other shopper in our store. And I just wanted to share a few quotes with you today from recipients and a few partner agencies with you today. So one person shared earlier this year, "I was formerly homeless. If it wasn't for the REMAP voucher, I would have had nothing in my apartment right now." "Staff are very helpful with information and advice that comes free of any hard sell. This has saved us money, solved problems, and helped us avoid school and work emergencies." And one of our partners shared, "Our clients appreciate selecting the merchandise they need and the availability of a wide variety to choose from between the two reuse stores. I have often received feedback about the helpfulness and courtesy of the reuse store workers. Reuse and REMAP's offer to deliver items is very generous. In every way, the Reuse Materials Access Program is truly a model of responsible consumption and mutual benefit."
Over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about REMAP. We regularly partner with over 40 local human service organizations to accept referrals to REMAP. Once a referral is received, we issue a gift card. These gift cards range between $180 and $360 each. We use a simple matrix of household size and materials requested. Each household is eligible to receive a REMAP gift card once per calendar year, with exceptions made for extenuating circumstances. Gift cards expire after 90 days. However, we regularly offer extensions to those who request more time. Each gift card comes with a free delivery within Tompkins County when possible to remove the transportation barrier that some face when it comes to moving large items, like furniture and appliances. Any funds not used once a gift card expires are returned to the program. The gift cards that REMAP recipients receive are the same as other gift cards to our Reuse centers. No limit on material type is placed on what recipients can purchase. This gives program participants the autonomy to shop for themselves, removing the stigma associated with receiving assistance. Our most requested materials are furniture, housewares, appliances, and clothing. We also often provide gift cards for technology, like laptop and desktop computers, tablets, and smartphones. This program is mutually beneficial to both households in need and Finger Lakes Reuse's mission to keep reusable materials in local circulation and out-of-the-way stream. Finger Lakes Reuse merchandise sales support 50% of each gift card issued and delivery fee. We fundraise to support the remaining 50% of these costs to offset the lost revenue opportunity and for staff time to provide the program. And we thank you for your consideration of our funding requests."
Thank you very much.
So I can see the timer. We're not sure why the timer isn't working on screen. So good job, because you finished with three minutes and 44 seconds left for question, answer, and then the standard. Got it, thanks.
All right, so with that, agency members, questions? Carl.
Thanks. You answered most of the questions that I had, or the committee had. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So you, clients are referred by partner agencies. You give the agencies the criteria to do, to vet, if you will, the clients?
We ask them just to let us know the category of their need. So we give them categories to choose from. What we're looking for basically is that they cannot afford the items on their own. That is the basic criteria.
Okay. And there's a range in terms of the amount of the voucher. How is that determined?
It's determined based on household size. So we give more depending on the larger household. Yeah, more people gives a greater size. And then based on what types of materials they're looking for. So we've basically have gone out and we update this each year based on the pricing in our store. So if they're looking for clothing, that's a, based on how, what our prices are for clothing, furniture, et cetera. And then we ask in our form what types of materials they're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm going to keep looking over my shoulder to see if Siobhan ends up with a question. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the Human Services Coalition.
What a plumb, by the way. They did it without a timer. Great job. So we've problem-solved that. I did want to say just a few things that I forgot in my discombobulation. Just wanted to let everybody know that we have about $1 million this year. We don't have that. We anticipate about $1 million this year. $244,000 in home and $796,000 in CDBG. Could we have less than that? Yes. Could we have more than that? Probably not. But for everybody that wonders, we know that this has been a big question for everybody. What is happening? We don't know, because we haven't heard yet from HUD, but we will convey that when we do do here. What else do I want to tell you? I did want to tell you about the timer that, that Robin and Abby didn't get, but you'll see it on the screen. Eight minutes for your initial prepared remarks. Then any of the extra time, if you have any, after eight minutes, they'll go right into questions, and then you'll still have the four-minute Q and A. Then Charles will switch to the four minutes once we get to that. Sorry, the screen was frozen earlier. I'm really glad that our presenters had presented last week. And we're all pros at doing this. So thank you, everybody, in advance for all your collaborative efforts in making this work. Okay.
Thanks, Aneesa.
As soon as you start talking, Charles will start the timer.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. I'm John Mazzello. I am the deputy director at the Human Services Coalition and program director for 2-1-1 Tompkins Helpline. Joining me this morning is Nicole Ralston, who's our 2-1-1 contact center manager. And I wanted to start this morning by thanking the IURA and the committee for your past support and for your consideration this year. Your support of this project would enable 2-1-1 to continue to respond to the needs of city residents when they're looking to us for help. 2-1-1 assists people in the community by providing information about programs and services that might help them, providing links to resources, warm handoffs, and compassionate support as individuals are seeking to meet their needs. While 2-1-1 is available to anyone, we primarily serve people in the low-to-moderate income ranges. Demand to 2-1-1 has remained high. In the last year, contacts were nearly 20% higher than we used to see prior to COVID, and that has remained consistent over the past couple of years. 2-1-1 often changes to respond to community need. You've read in our application about our efforts to provide deeper services in the areas of high demand like housing and transportation. HSC and 2-1-1 have been fortunate to have secured funding for specialist positions in those areas. But what our transportation and housing funding does not support is core 2-1-1 information and referral work that assists any individual contacting us with any need to find help specific to their situation. Our request to the IURA would support portions of the wages, payroll taxes, and fringe benefits for 2-1-1's full-time generalist staff, including Nicole, our contact center manager, a full-time community service specialist or operator, and two part-time community service specialists that add up to about 1.4 FTE total. Overall, through this request, 2-1-1 aims to support at least 2,750 people with low to moderate incomes through 2-1-1 services. And we're also committing to supporting at least 30 individuals with in-depth housing navigation, though we're not requesting funding to directly support that work through this application. Our application addresses priority needs in the consolidated plan, including information and referral, landlord-tenant counseling, factors related to displacement due to economic pressure, and transportation services. I want to take a moment to talk about one of the new initiatives that 2-1-1 is taking on. So modeled after the housing specialist position that we already have at HSC, we'll be adding two new positions to 2-1-1 to support transportation needs through a new contract we have with Tompkins County. 2-1-1 is going to serve as the One Call, One Click Transportation Center, providing access to transportation services and individualized support as part of a larger partnership with Tompkins County, Go Ithaca, TCAT, and other providers. This initiative is the evolution of a mobility-as-a-service pilot that the county has had for the past couple of years. And we'll include a traveler-focused app, customer service through 2-1-1, it's our role, and financial support to provide transportation to community members. The positions we're hiring include a specialist who will focus on community members' transportation needs, supporting individuals, and another who will do that and also focus on developing the capacity across Tompkins County to significantly increase volunteer driver services available in the county. As part of that work, we're looking to reach like a 50 to 100% increase in the level of volunteer transportation services being provided, including working with FISH, who we've partnered with for years, as well as other volunteer driver programs. You asked in your questions about the travel line in the budget match. This will be used in part for mileage reimbursement costs for FISH and also mileage reimbursement costs for other volunteer driver programs. And as I mentioned, we're looking to significantly increase that. So most of that, most of that travel money is for volunteer driver reimbursement for mileage. There's also a bit of, a bit in there that we can use to do urgent transportation needs for someone who's working with our, our transportation specialists. So if they need to have a, you know, an urgent need met through transportation, we can pay for that. So it's not, essentially not mileage for 2-1-1 staff. With that, I'll turn it over to Nicole to talk a little bit more about the day-to-day specifics at 2-1-1.
Good morning, and thank you also to the IURA Board for your continued support of 2-1-1. I'll share some additional details about some new and ongoing projects that we're working on. We are in the second year of partnering with Cornell University to offer the VIDA Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program in Tompkins County at the library. In our second year, we are seeing an increase of about 15% more calls from last year. So we're happy to see that the program is growing. We are in our fifth year of working with United Way of Tompkins County to offer the United Way 2-1-1 Alice program that provides direct assistance for needs like rent and utilities. About half the clients receiving help live in Ithaca City for that program in the last funding year. I'll share a little story. Recently, we assisted an elderly woman in the city of Ithaca on a fixed income, and she needed a fuel pump replaced in her vehicle, costing over $1,000. So between the United Way program and another agency in Tompkins County, we were able to provide her with that assistance. And this woman depends on her car to get to, you know, medical appointments and to get to the grocery store. We also still have our 2-1-1 housing specialist, Brett Irish, who supports individuals facing housing disparities, particularly those in eviction court. He attends Ithaca City Court every week and works with Law New York to help clients finding any, any resources to help them with paying their back rent and avoiding eviction. There actually are some leftover funds from ERAP that they've been able to access and compiled with programs like United Way 2-1-1 Alice can significantly help to people, people to stay their evictions. As John talked about, we are excited to have been selected as the county One Call, One Click Center. We have an app in development. It's called Tompkins Transportation Scout, a one-stop shop for accessing information on various transportation providers and also connecting people to carpool options. So somebody could, you know, share that they have a car and they're driving into town and connect with somebody else who needs a ride. The One Call, One Click Center also supports the FISH Medical Transportation Program and other volunteer driver programs. There was a question that you guys asked about the, the mileage being supported and how long the trips are. On average, they're about 20 miles. They could be as short as just a few miles for somebody who's in the city that needs to get a doctor appointment in the city, but it could be as far away as going to like Rochester, which is about 100 miles round trip. Other volunteer driver programs would vary in distance based on the client need. We are also a partner of the Ithaca Electric Transit Access Pilot Project that will be later this summer, providing an on-demand van pool service to underserved communities in Ithaca City in areas like West Hill and South Side neighborhoods. At 2-1-1, we will assist people reserving that van pool service. That will also be an app for that, of course. But supporting those who don't have access to internet or a mobile app can contact us at 2-1-1, and we can help book those rides. Finally, as John mentioned, we have a number of partnerships to support the community, but core 2-1-1 funding remains limited. In past years, 2-1-1 funding has not been included in the governor's budget, but our 2-1-1 network seeks a legislative added for state funding to support our core services. Ithaca residents have trusted and relied on 2-1-1 Helpline for many years. Thank you so much for considering our request. Any other questions?
Thanks very much. Agency members? Carl?
Thank you. You answered pretty much everything that the committee wanted to know, but a question that came up. Nicole, you mentioned that you receive funds from Cornell VIDA, and I see it's in your budget, $6,000. Is that a direct donation or is that in-kind for the student volunteers?
The, the, to them or to us from them?
To you from Cornell.
Yeah, so that is... Very dramatic now. Better than an alarm. The, 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 so last year, in their first year, the support was more limited, and it came actually from grant, grant funding through the Park Foundation, which supported the startup of the, the new VIDA program. This year, I believe, we haven't gotten the payment yet, but I believe it's coming out of their, their VIDA grant from the IRS. So it's about as firm as anything else right now.
Board member Siobhan has a question.
And so, Siobhan, you're recognized, and not to be a nerd, but I'm sorry, you are required, when you ask your question, to turn your camera on, per the law. Thank you.
Hi. Oh, no. Sorry, I can't be there in person today. I appreciate your presentation. You mentioned the housing specialist position and that it's able to provide eviction support. Is it also able to provide assistance in identifying locally available housing units?
Yes, that is correct. Brett works with clients who come with a variety of housing needs, whether it be looking for housing, helping individuals who present homeless. But he does have a big focus in eviction court as part of his role.
Yeah, one other, one other thing that's coming for, for many of the agencies in Tompkins County, not just us, is some additional support that's coming through the Medicaid 1115 waiver, the Social Care Network, which will provide for folks who are on Medicaid and otherwise eligible, may provide some additional housing-related assistance, including possibly rent assistance and time spent with the housing search.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no further questions. Thank you very much. I think I just saw Sue on Zoom, right?
Just for audience member clarification, I have told people who are going to be in the waiting room that we are going to try to let them in when it's least disruptive for the speakers. So if anybody's watching on Zoom and wondering why they haven't been let in yet, that's why. So next, we have scheduled the team from A Place to Stay. And I don't know if the person who entered is from the team, doesn't look like it. So I think A Place to Stay isn't online yet.
Okay.
Yes, we are, so.
Okay, that is them. Okay. So I'm sorry if I didn't recognize you. We're doing a slightly different format this year. So A Place to Stay, why don't you give the thumbs up when you're ready? And when you start talking, Charles will start running the eight-minute clock. And then after eight minutes, you'll have four minutes for Q and A.
Okay. Um, so I am the case manager for the housing program at Catholic Charities. We have multiple housing programs, but right now, I'm just going to talk about A Place to Stay. Since 2016, A Place to Stay is a transitional housing program designed to support individuals experiencing homelessness as they work towards long-term stability. Clients enter the program through a referral process and are placed in a shared housing unit, which usually looks like a four-bedroom house or their own apartment. All apartments and shared housing units are conveniently located in downtown Ithaca, close to other service providers. Once housed in the program, clients receive comprehensive case management tailored to their individual needs. Our team works closely with them to address barriers to stability, such as employment, mental health, substance use, legal issues, domestic violence, education, and living skills. When possible, we have local agencies come to the house to present topics on independent living skills. We seek seminars and trainings and connect individuals with community resources and other service providers, so that they may receive the extent of the help that our community has to offer. When possible, we have local, oh, sorry. The goal of the program is to equip clients with the skills, resources, and support necessary to transition to stable, permanent housing. Through structured case management and a safe environment, we build a foundation for long-term success. In this past year, 2024, 13 women were housed at a place-to-stay women's house. Of those 13, nine of those women were placed into permanent housing on discharge, and two of them are still residing in a place-to-stay but have secured permanent housing and will be moving out by the end of the month. One resident had their parole revoked based on a violation that happened prior to her entering our program, and one resident moved in at the end of 2024 and is ready to start looking for permanent housing now. We also provide aftercare as needed, which can be in the form of referrals, giving references, advocating, emotional support, or just check-ins. Our program has recently expanded as well. We now have a three-bedroom men's shared housing unit and three scattered sites apartments for individuals and families. Right now, the lease for the current women's shared housing unit will end in June due to the landlord selling the house. We were given an additional six months after the lease ends to find a new housing unit. So far, we have been working with two landlords, and we've viewed two potential housing units. I have to run, and it looks like I have a background that I didn't set up, but I've got my director, Shawnee Milton, and our residential assistant, Echelle Brannigan, who is going to take over for me. And they can answer any questions you have. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today and for your support.
Thank you.
Hi.
I wouldn't worry about the background, so you don't eat into your time.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for having us and considering us for another year of branding, of getting ready. We just prepared a short speech, so if you have any questions.
I'm, just to clarify, because I can't read body language through Zoom, you have a short speech that you're about to read, or that was...
No, no, sorry, apologize. That was it, sorry.
Oh, okay, okay, then we'll turn to questions. Agency members? Cheyenne?
Hi, thank you for being here. I just had one question. Just as an aside, really. If your clients in the place-to-stay for homeless women have children, is there space where they are staying, or is there other arrangements there?
So we do not have children staying in the four-bedroom house that we have for women. We haven't yet had a family in a scattered site, but it's something that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Siobhan?
So I, two questions. One is whether the women who are staying in...
Um, so I have two questions. One is whether the women who are staying in the unit that you have are required to financially contribute at all? Or if the housing is provided for free of cost at them? And the second question is, you mentioned that you provide continued support after people leave A Place to Stay? And I was curious how long you're able to provide those services and what sort of support you offer?
Um, so as far as support afterwards, it's really individual-based, just like it is during the time that they're staying there. So everything that we do is just based on what that individual needs. So some need more support than others. We do a lot of speaking with like other providers sometimes, such as Treatment Corps or Family Treatment Corps. We definitely have gone to some graduations of people who have left our program before. We've received phone calls late at night for rides from, to be picked up from jail. And recently, as one thing, a lot of like advocating with landlords or sometimes with the courts as well. It, it really depends. It could be anything.
And there's not a time limit on how long we'll provide as a service. As far as rental payments, so DSS will cover payment for someone who has no income. The amount is usually around $400 coming from DSS. If someone is employed, 30% of their income would go towards rent. Which is usually, is usually lower than the 400 that DSS will pay.
Thank you.
Carl?
When did the, the men's shelter come online? And has that caused complications for these, in terms of the support services?
What do you mean by complications?
Men being willing to take guidance and advice from your female staff.
I see what you're saying.
So we opened it around October, the end of October, very end of October. And no, there hasn't been any complications or problems. The men's house is great. We have great relationships with them. Speak days, it's, I don't want to say easier than the women's house, but it's, it's, it's not hard at all. It's great.
Cheyenne?
And we do bring in when possible. It's not always, it's pretty hard to get everybody's schedule like together. But we do referrals out and we try to have people come in and then come in as speakers.
Thank you.
So we had challenge come in.
Sorry, I, I do have to, uh, thank you. That was your dramatic Oscar playoff time. Thank you very much, though. Appreciate the questions.
Wait, Charles, you, Charles, they still have four minutes for Q and A?
Never mind, you still have four minutes.
Okay.
The timer is confusing me. So continue, continue.
This is a Q and A period now, so the board members will be asking their questions. No formal remarks anymore.
I just had another question. So this proposal is about financing the case management hours. And I just was wondering, how does this, these services dovetail with the low, with the high barrier service criteria in other, for other county services? And does, does the staff have to deal with that side of things? Or is this really just about case management for the women that are in the building?
Uh, we don't cover, we're more about case management if you're asking about like, we are not in the financial part of things. We don't really do budgeting if that's what you're asking. I'm not sure if I understood the first part of your question.
No, I just, the, the, the proposal is about paying for the hours for the case managers, right? So that was really my question was, is there, is, do the case managers also have to liaise with the county around other homeless services, et cetera? Or is this like really primarily dedicated to working with the, the residents?
Well, we work with, i- it's dedicated to working with the residents, but also at the same time, people apply and don't necessarily, or we don't have room to like get them in. And when people graduate the program and go into their own housing, we still work with them. So in that sense, it's beyond just the people right in our program. But otherwise, the goal is to help the people first who we're serving.
Great, thanks.
Now this time, I'll really thank you for your presentation and your, and your answers. Have a great rest of the day.
Okay, thanks a lot. Um, next up is Learning Web. You're in person. And just to let you know, and not to discombobulate you, but I'm going to try to have a different view so we see you bigger.
Go right ahead.
We'll smile. Okay. We'll try to look good up here, making the same seats. All right, here we go. I'm Michelle Nolan. I'm the deputy director of the Learning Web.
I'm Anthony Pelongly. I'm the director of youth outreach at the Learning Web.
And we're back to talk about our application for $36,786 to provide staffing costs for case management, mental health counseling, and administrative oversight for our other application, the Housing Scholarship Program. The money that we've asked for represents about 40% of the, of the funds necessary to case manage and administrate the, the Housing Scholarship Program. As a reminder, the Housing Scholarship Program would house up to five literally or imminently homeless youth, including parenting youth ages 21 to 24 for 12 months in scattered site apartments in the city of Ithaca. And we've already obtained about $76,000 in matching funds to support this program. The Learning Web's been operating the Housing Scholarship Program since 2008. This program's housed soon-to-be 69 youth and exited 66 of those. We've just started into our new contract and we have three youth, about one youth housed and two, two moving in, two youth housed and one ready. 59 of those 66 that have exited remain stably housed after six months. And so this program has enabled us to serve and exit about four youth per year since 2008. Every year except for last year, the Learning Web's operated this program without asking for funding for staffing. But our Youth Outreach Program has grown. As I said last time, we have 31 active leases now with 17 landlords. In 2008, we had 14 apartments. So our Youth Outreach Program has grown as funding has contracted. In addition, in our effort to attract, retain, and train quality staff, we continue to be committed to paying a living wage. So we, we are, you know, we just got the news too about the new living wage. And so we're committed to that and, and so that makes the costs of staffing rise. I just wanted to say that like, what I've said before when I've been here is that people don't stay housed by magic. It takes a lot of people behind the scenes to support people, especially youth who have come to us vulnerably, being unhoused. And in 12 months, we are efficient with both time and funds to help these youth exit to safe, stable housing. And while we're doing that, our case managers are helping youth to learn life skills that are going to have, enable them to continue to stay housed, be employed, you know, get more education, obtain benefits, other, get mental health care, substance abuse care, and their financial literacy, all the skills necessary for any 21 to 24-year-old anywhere to maintain housing. So I just kind of want to normalize that, you know, here we are talking about, you know, youth who are homeless, but really any of us who have adult children know that we also provide a lot of support for youth, our own kids, in maintaining housing. So this is, you know, we are being asked to sort of be significant adults for youth who are vulnerable. And, and we do it very well. In 2024, the Learning Web housed 33 youth and helped 44 others obtain housing. We've transitioned 15 youth in our transitional living program into safe, stable housing and helped them maintain that housing. In addition, we offer aftercare to all of the youth that we serve. So if we house them, they're eligible for aftercare, sometimes until they're 25. So the only thing to be successful is because of staffing. These youth need our support, and Anthony and his staff are there to provide it. I sort of just wanted to have you give an idea of what it looks like when a youth comes in to...
So generally, yeah. So generally, when our youth come into our program, they're either homeless or about to be homeless within the next 14 days. A lot of these are coming to our program, they're having difficulties at home with their parents. It was not like they have that adult figure in their life to be that stable person to set an example. All of our youth that come in are homeless, so we help them get housing if they're not in our housing program. But once they come into our housing program, they meet with their case manager at minimum once a week in their apartment, oftentimes two to three times a week. We try to help them with education, employment, and addressing mental health or physical health needs. But one of the largest parts of our program is trying to have them understand savings and budgeting and being able to budget for a, you know, life after our program ends.
I just have one clarification question on the matching funds. Do you have a sense of what the approximate share versus, of that 76,000 change across the two projects are?
Can you...
So I'm sorry. So you have 76,000 and change for your Housing Scholarship Program under the Housing Project section? And then you list the same as above. I'm assuming that is not an additional 76,000.
No, no.
So I'm just wondering what the anticipated share across those two projects? I mean, I understand that they're very interrelated, but the matching share across those two projects might be?
Yeah, sorry, I'd have to figure that out and get back to you, but yeah.
Okay. Carl?
Thanks. My question similar has to do with the, the budget. The majority of funds you're requesting are government funds, are from HUD, from us. Sorry, but the impact on the program if no funds come through.
Um, if no funds come through, I mean, if, if no funds come through, then we wouldn't have the money to pay for the, pay for the housing in general. So we wouldn't have any money for leasing and so we wouldn't be able to open up those, those units, right? Up to five units. And if that's the case, then we wouldn't need the additional money for case management. We have money from other federal funders to cover the case management for other, our other housing programs that we operate. So it's all a little bit in flux, secondly. Giant question mark.
You work with 17 landlords, I believe you said, you know, across the city. Do they charge market rates or below market? Is it a mix?
It's, it's definitely a mix. We have, I mean, we, we, all of our apartments are below fair market or at fair market. But it's a mix. Some that we've been working with long terms will give us a lower rate, but for the most part, all of our new landlords are pretty much at fair market rate.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Cheyenne?
Assuming all the HUD funds are available for the, for the units, maybe could you talk a li, and, you know, you know that, that the public services are capped at 95 total for all the applicants, so. And assuming that were to work, could you just talk a little bit about what you would do in order to address the updated livable wage? Because I assume these budgeted numbers were under the, just expired, the voyage.
So I can talk about that a little bit, although our executive director is really our budgeter, so that's a new development. And so all, all choices are on the table, right? So, you know, we're committed to a livable wage. We have had a stable and very well-trained staff for the last over two years now, and we're not really willing to give that up. So I would say that our executive director is going to do everything in his power to make that a reality. So, you know, I guess everybody's sort of facing that. What does that mean? You know, we value our staff and the people that work with us quite a bit. And so, and we want them to be able to live in Tompkins County and have a good life here. And so that, you know, whether that means me, you know, going out to look for other funds, you know, like, yeah, I think like everything's on the table. It's hard to really say. Said that like three times.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, not, I have no idea about your actual budget, but I'm sure at least some of the staff already make above the existing livable wage. So then for some, the, the gap isn't so big, so.
It's quite a big gap, actually, to be really honest. We are all making at least a livable wage or a little bit above. But the new livable wage is quite a bit higher than the current. And so that is going to take some, some real, a hard look. And we don't want to reduce service, you know? Youth are coming to us and we're not interested in, in contract, you know, in contracting our services and, or losing staff. Nobody is, donkey wouldn't be after us or anything, you know? Like, we're all working really hard, you know? So, you know, nobody's wasting any time or we do.
I wouldn't think so.
Else?
Just as a partial funding kind of question, scaling. Your, your budget proposes basically staffing and it's a variety of, it's like your full, full staff, so to speak, that is associated with the program. Would you have priority positions in that list of, of, of salary support that you would highlight as your top priority if there was limited funding?
Sure, 100%. So case, direct case management. Anthony's services as the director of youth outreach. Mental health services. Can't ever get enough of free mental health services for youth. I think those would be the priorities that I would set. And then a second priority would probably be, you know, the cost, you know, to administrate the program. T-Bro is not, the T-Bro packets that we fill out for these five individuals are extensive. And so like that upstart is, you know, the startup time to administrate is worth it, but lengthy.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we're going to have Immigrant Services Program. They're on Zoom, so I'm going to try to change the, oh, perfect. Thank you, Charles. And Sue, just so you know, you'll see the ti, can you see the timers where you are, Sue?
Yes.
Okay, so if you hear music, that means that the eight minutes is done and you'll be going to the, just the formal Q and A. And when you start speaking, we'll start the clock. I will let you know that if you said something a second ago, we couldn't hear you, so there might be a slight pause or I might need to interject and ask you to reset something. But go ahead and start and we'll problem solve if we need to.
So can you hear me all right now?
I can hear you now.
You're quite low.
I don't know how to solve that, so I'll just try to speak louder, I guess. How about that?
Let's do it.
Okay, so my name is Sue Chafee. I'm the program director of the Immigrant Services Program at Catholic Charities. And today I want to talk about the legal immigration services that we offer. And then my coworker Francia is going to talk about our supportive services. So this past year, I filed over 200 applications with U.S. Immigration and Citizenship Services, which is known as USCIS. This resulted in immigration benefits such as citizenship, green cards, and work permits. These cases were filed either pro bono or at a low cost, which greatly benefits those who cannot afford a private attorney. To provide these services, our program pays for ongoing immigration training to keep my accreditation through the Department of Justice. We have such a high demand for our services that we currently have two other staff taking the required training to also work as legal practitioners. With the legal services in place, we help clients sort out all kinds of immigration concerns. With the legal services in place, we help clients sort out all kinds of immigration concerns. For example, a woman came to us because she had paid an attorney in Buffalo to assist with her case back in twenty-twenty. But he no longer returned her phone calls or answered her emails. One of her coworkers, who, who was also one of our clients, recommended she comes to us for help. We called the attorney, he answered the phone, and he agreed to speak with the client. And after a short conversation, he basically told her her case was pending and was slow just because of the pandemic. He said he would email her, but then there was no follow-up from him. So at that point, we helped her file a Freedom of Information request to USCIS to see exactly what had happened with the case. We learned through that request that her case had been denied two years prior to that because a request of evidence was never responded to. She had paid several thousands of dollars for a case that basically went nowhere. So we were able to get her case back on track, help her file it, we made it affordable. And now the case is pending, and this is for a green card. And then another client went through a house fire and then a debilitating stroke, forcing her into, into early retirement in her mid six, in her sixties. Her green card was lost to the fire, so she didn't have proof of her immigration status. Not having this proof prevented her from being able to collect retirement benefits and to be approved for Medicaid. Her partner tried for close to a year to get assistance by calling USCIS customer service first. And then he went to a local government official in Ithaca and who recommended him to contact Senator Schumer's office. After several calls with Senator Schumer's office, he, they still got nowhere on this case. So he ended up going to DSS to plead for them to approve the Medicaid application, which again, their hands were tied because she didn't have proof of her immigration ser- status. But the DSS caseworker knew us and knew our legal services, and she told them, just walk over there and make an appointment and they'll help you out. And basically, that's what we did. Long story short, we paid her application fee, which was two, five hundred and twenty dollars, so she could get the green card replaced and then filed her case pro bono. So these are just two examples of many cases we either have to troubleshoot, sort out the problem, or provide advocacy for through our legal services. So I'm going to have Francia present next about our supportive services, and following that, we'll answer questions, including those that Anissa sent me yesterday. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Francia, uh, and I'm a case manager here at Catholic Charities, working with the immigrant services program. Uh, today, I'm excited to share with you some of the meaningful work our team is doing to support individuals and families as they navigate, um, obstacles of settling into our community. We offer a wide range of support ser- services, and I'll highlight a few examples. Uh, the core of our program is ensuring our clients receive the assistance they need their most to, to address their most urgent challenges, whether it's navigating complex benefit systems, fulfilling their obligations, or addressing critical health-related concerns. A good example, um, is, uh, when we help a client who was notified that their health insurance coverage was ending by advocating on their behalf and working closely with, uh, Fidelis, that provider, we successfully updated their information and re-enrolled their children in the program. Another key area where we provide support is with benefits applications. Recently, I assisted a client with their Section Eight housing recertification and helped them renew their U.S. passport. We also support clients in applying for essential services like childcare assistance, SNAP benefits, and make referrals to Medicaid. Uh, we also make, uh, referrals to other critical services. For example, we often, um, refer clients to adult education resources by, to ensure that they gain the necessary skills for their journey to self-sufficiency. We also provide guidance regarding tax services and help clarify jury duty obligations for another client. Uh, one client in particular had an issue with the IRS where her tax return check wasn't back due to an address error. Uh, we, with our help, we worked with the IRS to resolve the issue, and she received her check a few weeks later. Uh, we understand that many of our clients' uh, clients face challenges with technology, so we also provide tech assistance when needed. Uh, for example, I visited an elderly, an elderly client who having trouble with her phone customer service. After contacting them on their behalf, on her behalf, we were able to get the remaining charges waived because they couldn't install the service to begin with. The next month, she received a bill showing a zero balance, giving her peace of mind. Our team is also actively involved in advocacy. For example, one of our clients reported unsafe working conditions. We helped her contact, uh, connect with a, uh, legal consultation to ensure she understood her rights. Another client, uh, a victim of domestic violence, uh, was referred to the advocacy center where we accompanied her and ensured she received the support she needed. In addition, our team has been successful in helping clients find employment. Last year, we placed thirty-one clients into jobs at local busne- businesses. We also assist with job training and ensure that our clients are well-prepared for their new roles. Our job developer placed a client in a position at Kendall Senior Services. And because of the language barrier, she needed clarification with the onboard training and the, and the employee manual. I went over the materials with her, uh, until she felt confident. These are just a few examples of the work our team is doing every day. We are proud of the difference we're making, helping our clients connect with resources, navigate life complexity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. We'll turn to questions from agency members at this time. Carl?
So I had three questions emailed to me, do you want me to address those quickly?
Um, I don't think we can, I think those had to be wrapped up into your presentation, so I'll just turn to agency members at this time.
Or if the committee members.
Or commissions, uh, questions the committee had. You're requesting approximately thirty percent of your budget from this agency. I'm wondering if the other seventy percent, you know, approximately, um, do you have any updates on that? Because in the budget in your packet is, they're listed as, uh, unsecured.
So one, we usually, for this project, we, we rely on county funding and then park funding and then from, um, I think we use some of our donations. I think we've applied for park, we haven't gotten anything, any responses yet, whether we're going to get this funding or not, but we're pretty sure that's going to be in place. And we just have to, every year, see how the county budget plays out and if we get our funding there.
Thank you. Um, it was mentioned that you had thirty-one job placements in twenty-twenty-four. So I'm wondering, do you have either formal or informal commitments with local employers to hire, um, your clients?
No, so what we do, we just offer this to the community, we don't get, um, we don't have any formal commitments or anything that we're getting paid for or that are involved in different grants. We just network with employers, we create relationships, we have good relationships with a lot of different HR agencies, and that's how we go about it.
And I guess this last one is, uh, is a, the big unknown. Um, how, how might the pressure of new federal mandates, you know, restrictions on immigrant services, impact your ability to meet your targets?
So our service goals have always been to change. It doesn't matter who's in it, the administration is, we're going to do immigration, legal services, job development, case management, and referring people to community resources. The mandates and restrictions are definitely impacting our clients. Um, right now, we have a lot of applications been put on hold, which can delay work permits. Fortunately, we don't have a refugee resettlement program, but some of our sister agencies have had to lay off staff when that was initially, you know, paused or, and now that it's back in the court, so we don't know how that's going to play out, but that doesn't affect our agency. So we've had, you know, these services in place for fifteen years, and I expect we'll be able to continue. It'll be a little bit more difficult and definitely more difficult and stressful for our clients, but, you know, we're still committed to do this work.
Thank you. Other questions?
Um, I, I was just going to ask, um, in the event that we can't fully fund you, how might you scale your operations?
Yeah, we would look, you know, I don't know if we can look for fundraising to help out with this. We'd have to reduce staff, uh, staff, um, hours, and there's three people whose salaries come out of this. But we would prioritize, you know, what our needs are. In the past, sometimes we have a job developer, sometimes we don't. I've been a one-person program, and we currently have seven people, so our demand is higher than ever. And right now, I feel like we have two part-time staff that could easily go full-time if we had the funding. Um, but we would just have to prioritize our positions and see if we can increase getting more funds on our end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It really is.
I just want to clarify for the, the committee and board members that, uh, Sue and I had a conversation earlier in which I thought I had conveyed the questions, which I hadn't. So that's why they couldn't be wrapped into the, um, presentation today.
Thank you. Um, so next, we have, uh, the Work Preserve Job Training from Historic Ithaca. And, um, as I said last week, you'll have to forgive me for being a real person, uh, as well as, as an elected official. I have to go, uh, let someone into my, my home, uh, for, so I'll, I'll be back, I'll be watching on Zoom, so Carl, the floor is yours.
Whenever you're ready, you can go.
Hello again, uh, I am Bethany Perici and term director at Historic Ithaca, and I'm joined again by Jordan Gobernali, our Work Preserve manager. Um, we'd like to thank you all for your time and continued support of Historic Ithaca's job readiness program. As I mentioned in our proposal, Historic Ithaca's mission can be broken into three pillars, education, advocacy, and empowerment. We're here today to talk about the job readiness program, which focuses on the empowerment. By fostering practical skills, competence, and providing support, we empower our participants to succeed in any other training programs or employment that lies ahead. Valuable IURA funding has allowed us to prepare participants for workplace demands. These typically young individuals rely on our services to not only gain transferable skills, but to learn how to navigate workplace culture and demand. Work Preserve's job readiness program is designed to provide participants with the essential professionalism needed to succeed in the workplace through one-on-one support. We tailor our training to meet individual needs, ensuring our participants are met with the individual, with their individual starting point. Our unique programming covers critical life and professional skills, including adhering to a schedule, effective communication, financial literacy, such as opening and balancing a bank account, and navigating processes like driver's license applications and testing. The individualized approach is crucial because many of these essential skills cannot be taught thoroughly in schools the way that meets every person's unique challenges. Traditional education often lacks the personalized one-on-one attention needed to address barriers that can prevent long-term employment success. And our program goes beyond basic job training by supporting participants in sensitive areas such as personal hygiene, interpersonal communication, professional conduct, topics that can be difficult to navigate without guidance. At this point, I'll turn it over to Jordan, who will speak more about our programming itself.
Thanks, Bethany. Good morning, everybody. Um, in our grant proposal, we frequently mention our new assessment program, the Green Job Starter Kit, which we all asked about. I wanted to explain that program a little bit to you and give you an understanding of how it impacts our readiness training. Um, so the Green Job Starter Kit, or GGSK, is a new assessment tool, which we rolled out at the end of last year. Um, assessments within this, like, short timeframe that it gives, gives us the ability to pair participants with the readiness training, uh, or partner organization that's right for them. The GGSK is funded entirely by the Park Foundation and was created as a solution to many of the onboarding challenges that us and our partners' organizations face. Um, in the past, we have, in the past, having most of our participants on-boarded through programs like the Tompkins County Job Link, um, there would often be a long delay in meeting a participant and, um, who needs job training and having all their paperwork through and actually getting started working with them. This process being a lengthy one would sometimes cause us to lose those participants and lose contact with them. Um, generally, the people who need that job readiness training are not in a position to wait for weeks before getting payment. The other issue GGSK addresses is that often when we onboard participants, we wouldn't get a lot of information about their abilities and other challenges that they're facing. The GGSK program addresses these challenges by giving us the opportunity to onboard participants immediately upon meeting them. Um, they get a reimbursement of five hundred and forty dollars for their first thirty-five hours worked, and during those thirty-five hours, we can get the ball rolling with them, um, assessing those soft skills, abilities, interests, and jobs, um, as well as getting them through the enrolling paperwork of our partner organizations to give them longer-term job readiness training. Uh, this allows us to kind of get them started and then seamlessly transition them into other, into our readiness program or potentially one of our partner organization programs. The addition of the GGSK has already bolstered our onboarding numbers for job readiness. Um, this year, as well as at the end of last year, uh, our first successful completion of the, of the program and rolling over into our readiness program has happened for this year already. Without the funding for the job readiness, our assessment and placement programs would also suffer. The three of them are designed to feed into each other and into our partner organizations when appropriate, to give participants the holistic approach to ju- to workforce development that is really necessary for them to succeed. Thanks for your time and attention, we're now happy to answer any other questions you guys have.
Questions from board members? Cheyenne?
Um, I think you explained this, but could you just, um, for the record, just go reiterate the difference between this and the other proposal? Or request?
They're tied together, certainly. Um, one is for job readiness, one is for job placements. So typically, when we first see a participant, we enroll them in our job readiness training, um, we work with them on soft skills, um, we work with them on some more of those hard skills. And then as they go through that, we kind of transition into how those can apply to getting a job or a career and helping them navigate their resume and applying for jobs. Um, so this is kind of the first part of that, of that program.
So, for example, in the budget, it's supporting, um, salaries for, um, for trainers, et cetera. And those sort of the same people that are also then going to work, not with those same people, but like with the job placement program as well?
It's all the same staff working with, working with the same people.
That's in perculum?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Siobhan?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could expand a little bit more on the Green Job Starter Kit and sort of how that differs from other trainings that you've offered previously? Um, and what sort of jobs you're hoping to place people in through that?
So I think the, the real key difference between that is that it is designed to get people into job readiness immediately. It's really just like the, the beginning starter piece of job readiness, in which you kind of get to know somebody, you figure out what skills that they have, what skills they need, what their interest is. And it was created as a solution to our other onboarding problems, so that we could onboard people immediately, get them paid in that, like, two-to-four-week period that is often so critical between someone asking for help with job training and actually getting that help. Um, we're able to reduce that down to, to no time between, you know, they can come in and start working with us that day or the next, potentially. It's really an expansion of the job readiness program set to go at the beginning.
And I'd just like to be clear that that funding is completely separate from the readiness and placement program, we do have that funding secured for the year.
Great, thank you.
Do we have other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so, um, thank you. The next presenter we have here is Nikki from Bike Walk Tompkins, um, oh, I'm sorry, a team from Bike Walk Tompkins.
Should I let you know I'm bringing a team?
No, that's fine. So, since you weren't here last time, I think you've been seeing how it works, you'll have eight minutes for your prepared remarks. When you hear the music, that means stop prepared remarks or any questions you're answering, and then you'll go into formal question and answer. What else did I want to say? As soon as you're ready, you can start talking and Charles will begin the timer. Cool.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all, especially in person. It's not usually my style to read a speech, but I want to make sure I give you plenty of time to ask questions. I'm Nikki Ray Israelson. I'm the Director of Bike Walk Tompkins. And I'm joined by Laura Vineyard, who is the Executive Director of the Center for Community Transportation, which is the nonprofit organization that houses this program and the community bike shop. Bike Walk Tompkins has been embedded in the Ithaca community since our first Streets Align event back in 2012. For over a decade, we have been dedicated to making biking and walking safer, more convenient, and more accessible. And our mission with all the different programs in CCT is to create a more connected transportation system that provides residents with many, many choices in how they move from place to place. While our community bike shop has only been open for two years, it has quickly become the heart of Bike Walk Tompkins. Since we last sought funding from y'all in 2024, we have served 598 individuals and seen a 189% increase in overall shop participation. Our dedicated team of staff and volunteers has completed nearly 300 free assisted bike repairs and distributed over 100 helmets, bike lights, and locks, making a tangible difference in safety and well-being of our bicycling community. The need for more transportation in Tompkins County and in the city is well documented. My organization played a key role in developing a countywide transportation equity needs assessment that we affectionately call TINA, conducted between 2022 and 2023. Through surveys, focus groups, and community-led forums, the assessment found that current transportation barriers contribute to heightened stress and reduced autonomy, particularly for low-income and underserved populations. Increasing affordable transportation options, including bicycles, was identified as a critical solution alongside improved infrastructure and more frequent public transit, because we have hills. One question that I often hear, whether it's at a community event or when I'm stopped at a red light on a bike, or in a meeting like this, biking in Ithaca with all of these hills and with the cold weather. And for me, the answer is, yeah, I bike for most of my daily commuting. Sometimes I take the bus if I have a meeting at Cornell and I don't want to climb a hill. Or I drive if my wife doesn't need the car and it's freezing out. And sometimes I walk. But many people that we serve at this community bike shop, biking is not a choice, it's a necessity. They may answer the same question about bicycling with, yes, this is how I hold down a job. Yes, this is how I get to my probation meetings. Yes, because my parents couldn't afford driving lessons for me. Yes, this is how I pick up my elderly mother's prescriptions. And these are all real stories that we hear at the bike shop. We serve Ithacans facing severe transportation challenges. People with little to no income, high stress, and few reliable mobility options. Data from our sign-in systems show increasing participation from individuals who are unemployed, or disabled, or raising children, or working part-time. Many of our participants are referred to us by social workers and case managers, indicating a deeper issue of housing instability and economic hardship. In addition, many of the people we serve have unpredictable schedules and limited internet access. To meet their needs, our shop needs to be open more often. Currently, we operate just seven hours per week during the peak time across two days, typically Tuesdays and Saturdays. Right now, it's just Saturdays, which is far less than the demand requires. Our space reaches full capacity nearly every time we open, especially in the warmer months. The most effective solution to address this increased demand is the hiring of a full-time bike shop manager, ensuring that we can be open consistently, have reliable service, which is a desperate need in transportation, and to be able to expand our hours. Additionally, we aim to purchase a second outreach trailer to bring our free repair clinics and bicycle donations directly to the communities in need. Though we do operate primarily out of our space at 803 Cascadilla Street near the Big Green Star, our bike shop has been designed to serve our most vulnerable residents. We receive donated, often broken bicycles. We repair them and we distribute them affordably, either at a low cost or through direct donations, a work-trade program, and partnerships with local social service agencies. In addition, we partner with GoIthaca, which is our newly designated Transportation Demand Manager for the county. And they allow us to subsidize the cost of bicycles and the maintenance for them for individuals who qualify in their income-based easy access program. Finally, our staff and our volunteers teach essential bike repair skills, transferring those skills to the individuals while assisting in participant-led bicycle repair. We keep our services free and necessary parts and components are affordable. We try to make them as affordable as possible. In conclusion, transportation is a fundamental need for the folks in the city of Ithaca. Organization as a whole rejects the one-size-fits-all approach to transportation and instead tailor our programs to meet the needs of our community. By providing practical alternatives to car ownership, our community members gain greater autonomy and more sustainable futures. For many, that autonomy is gained through bicycle ownership, which is a major stepping stone, much like gaining housing or employment. And having a working bicycle means greater access to employment, to healthcare, to education, and essential services. We ask for your support to help us sustain this program that we are currently running and to expand our critical services. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions?
Thank you for that presentation. In the proposal, the bulk of the request is to fund a bike shop manager, I mean, to support funding for the bike shop manager and the Bike Walk Tompkins Program Director. Can you talk about what those two lines do in particular? And how they are different? And are they full-time or part? What is the characteristics of those jobs? Because those are the ones that are being...
So I'm the Program Director, and my position is currently full-time. And it's funded by several different streams of grant funding. As a program of CCT, our different, so CarShare and BikeShare and Bike Walk Tompkins were all producing funds either through rider revenue, through joint grant proposals. And so it is my job to help continue to write grants, to look at the overarching programmatic goals of Bike Walk Tompkins, because we don't simply just run a bike shop. We do bicycle education.
So now we'll start the formal Q and A.
Yeah, sweet. We do bicycle education. We do tons of outreach with other community partners. We work with the school district. So I'm looking at how all of these different offerings work together to achieve our mission. Though we do have a small team, sometimes I am working in the bike shop. And then currently, we have our mechanics, who are extremely part-time, like 10 hours a week at max, sort of cobbling together, being shop managers, which essentially is being available to be the skilled mechanic at open shop hours, to be the people who are training volunteers and orienting them to the space, to provide that one-on-one assistance and teaching, and also hosting classes. So the proposed bike shop manager ideally is a full-time position that would not only be funded by this grant source, but many others. You have anything else to add on that?
I just, I would add that the idea here of getting into this situation where we have this full-time person is to help us create much more efficiency in execution of programs. Because as Nikki said, since we, you know, work with a variety of staff, making it work all together, that there's just a real opportunity here to create so much more impact when we have someone who can do that focused work rather than having to do the extra labor of coordinating it across multiple positions.
Well, it looks like there's also the, there's the community bike shop manager and the Program Director. So are they both full-time or? Ideally, yes, but that is not the current setup. The current setup is, I am full-time and we don't have a shop manager currently. So the shop manager is a new line? Yes.
Siobhan?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the targeted outreach you do for underserved populations and what like partner organizations you have to do that outreach?
Yes, so ideally, we, the workflow would be first connecting with a community partner. So that in the past and currently, we would connect with Cell塞Community Center, with Nomoslagamas, with Open Doors English, organizations like that, where it'd be like, so what are you interested in? And they would sometimes say, well, we want you to teach a bike safety class. So we would send staff to do that. Sometimes they say, well, we have a lot of folks who are, usually it's, we have a lot of children who need their bikes worked on. Okay, great. We're going to send some mechanics over there to host an event where we work on the bikes. Maybe we have a bike educator who will run a little rodeo to teach youth how to ride or what are the like traffic rules? So that would be the workflow, right? Or it has been. We don't like to just pop up in random places without reaching out to our community partners. You have anything to add?
Yeah, we just, we work really hard at CCT to have a very integrated approach and connect with a variety of community partners and build those strong relationships. And so that's, that's the heart of it, is asking, is going to the folks and finding out what they need and building what we can do to really meet that need rather than imposing an outside idea, as Nikki mentioned. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
I feel like it's a very cinematic music. Okay, next, we have Scott Sherwood from Service and Unity to talk about the Bridging Gaps Program.
Enough of these, I know how it works. You don't have to explain it. What a good day. All right. First off, thank you for this opportunity and good morning. My name is Scott Sherwood. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Service and Unity. Service and Unity was an idea I had in October of 2021. And I grinded for three years to make it a fully operational 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which is never for the faint of heart. Service and Unity is a unique grassroots organization that employs people in all forms of recovery and provides services to local nonprofits and other small businesses. And my goal today is to talk about the base model, because there seemed to be some confusion in that. And if there is time, I can talk about our relaunch, which is happening Monday, which I'm really excited about. And one of our base principles that I hope you see in this is, for this to work, it has to work for everybody involved. There's nobody that, nobody sacrificing. And so the other part of that is Service and Unity does the heavy lifting and removes 90% of the risk for hiring people in recovery. So my background currently, I'm President of Ithaca Community Recovery. I've also spent time on the Nami Finger Lakes Board, so I have feet in both substance abuse and mental health. And both of these groups always talk about employment and the risk to of that. And it's a life and death choice for a lot of people, where they have to balance their treatment and their employment. And how do they do that? Service and Unity was started by the base idea, you never, you always choose your treatment. You always choose your recovery. We make sure you're employed. And so we focus on adding the value into the individual from employment, instead of just the employment piece. And with that, so a couple air bones apart, all staff of Service and Unity and program participants are W2 employees. They all work directly for Service and Unity. That gives us, allows us to give them workers' comp, allows us to guarantee on our commitment to these individuals. We will hire somebody for as little as two hours a month. Showing up is a hard thing to do. Showing up for a commitment of 40 hours or 20 hours is even more difficult. We also, we will work around scheduling, so or treatment courts, parole, whatever you have, we work around that. Your daycare, we work around that. If you have concerns about losing your benefits, we work around that. Our goal is to be the lowest obstacle piece for employment in town, and we are achieving that. We also, we reject stigma in all forms, and we become an advocate for our staff in that. All of our clients sign a part of their proposal that they will reject stigma and provide a supportive environment. And if any of my people have come up against something that makes them uncomfortable, they are allowed to leave and they do not risk employment. We just support them through this. And just having that statement allows people to enter the work world. It's such a scary thing for so many people. So now we have all this labor, so what do we do with this? I come at this from a business approach. So I go, let's help small businesses and nonprofits. I know my nonprofit roles. I'm desperate for resources that are affordable and small-scale. Two hours is a huge deal to some of us. And so we go, well, if we can hire for as little as two hours, let's provide services for as little as two hours and see how this goes, because now we're affordable. Now we're adding places where people can be of value. And when they leave that, go, I helped that organization. That's what we're about. And again, there's no sacrifice. They get services in return. Just as a clarification, I know this came up. All of our places where people, where we provide services pay for all employment costs and all employment costs, like wages and employment cost. And so our goal is to continue to build these community partners where, again, everybody's winning in this scenario. So one thing that's really nice about that is it allows organizations to use existing budget dollars to benefit their community. Right? Because you get a grant, we're all here, and I need help to move this from here. How are we going to do that? I can go help this other group. So our group is to be able to plug in with all of these different organizations. So the next piece is, how do you hire people in recovery safely? That's what we came up against, and we developed our staffing partner network, which I understand there was some confusion about in the questions. Our staffing partner network is the only way we promote our jobs. And that is basically all treatment providers in town are staffing partners. And that includes Cars, St. John's, Serenity House, Tompkins County Mental Health, Drug Court, Treatment, you know, all the courts. And I think currently, we're up to 10. And what that includes is I usually do a staff meeting. I go, hey, I would love to make this better. Tell me why I'm insane. Tell me why I'm wrong. And so I hope you see that this is a community-built program by the professionals. And so here's another thing is they, it needs to work for them. There is a labor shortage. The last thing you can do to somebody in a treatment, that's a treatment provider, is go, I need you to do more work for this benefit. So instead, what we do is we send a newsletter on every two to three weeks to individual caseworkers. So it doesn't have to trickle down. And then the caseworker goes on their phones, goes, oh, that's a great opportunity for John. And next time they see John, they have a constructive conversation about employment. Are you ready for employment? And if they are, then they connect them into me. And eventually, we hire them hopefully, if it all works out. They still have to take one step, and our entry level is they have to complete a job application and we talk. And I can't, that network keeps growing. On my proposal, there was adding three staffing partners. I've already completed that, including Ithaca Area Economic Development. So we fill in a piece, when you're not ready for the direct-to-work now, they can, they're going to send them my way. And then when people can graduate out of our program into direct-to-work, which is really exciting. So one narrative, it's my favorite narrative, we help the Downtown Ithaca Childcare Center. We're talking about a company that has a shoestring budget and they're just, they don't have a lot of resources. When I show up, I usually am in the Executive Director's office and I go, I'm here to help you do whatever you need to do. And in there, there was a crib that's been there for three months to get put together. Their staff is busy chasing toddlers, right? And so they hire us for two hours a month now. My person shows up, puts together a crib. When he leaves, what did I do today? I put together a crib so an infant can sleep today. When he shows up, everybody's like, oh, my goodness, thank you so much for being here. I can't wait to have this. And when he's leaving, oh, my goodness, thank you so much for putting that together. A lot of the people I work with carry a lot of shame and a lot of stigma, and there's not a lot of people that are exactly excited to see them. not a lot of people that are exactly excited to see them. And we flip that on the, on its head. And that continues to win. And when we do it well, a treatment provider wins, person in recovery wins, a local nonprofit or small business wins. And I truly believe if any one of those win, our city as a whole will win. And it just ripples. So our pilot project was last year. In nine months, we went from absolutely nothing to invoicing for over 300 hours of time, which is 300 hours of somebody in recovery providing services. We helped eight different organizations, many of them now email me going, you're my first stop for any help. And we helped eight different individuals in recovery become their first employment piece. And they've, they've grown, the person that did the Downtown Ithaca Childcare, uh, actually graduated from Treatment Court early, got off parole early and was able to move to Pennsylvania.
Okay, great, thank you, Scott. Uh, questions? Oh, go ahead, Shana.
Just to triple clarify, um, using the DICC collaboration as the example, so in that case, DICC pays the individual two hours a week or whatever that turned out to be, right?
Uh, actually what happens is DICC will pay Service and Unity. And then we invoice the customer and then we, the, the, the key on our, our model is that people work directly for us. And that's what allows us to guarantee all of the, all the great things I said will happen. They never risk their actual employment. And so that also allows us to have the business insurance and workers comp insurance and it's to DICC, they just pay us an invoice.
Then, but the worker is then able to say they worked at DICC or no?
We say that we give them a working history through Service and Unity. So they get a verifiable work history through Service and Unity and that's, they can work two hours a month and still say they have had an extended work history for however long they stay with us.
Donna?
Um, so you're, you're pretty much like a temporary employment agency for a specialized group of clients, is that right? Like a, like a manpower for people in recovery, is that right?
Yes, we, we, our newest model actually has us providing services, which we, at first, we weren't going to be a temp agency because we had negative connotations from a lot of people that were working. We were just going to be a cleaning company. So when you hire a cleaning company, you don't always get to choose the cleaner who shows up. We're, we're expanding that into being a temp agency and that's where a lot of our proposals insist on the stigma free. We're also getting into one-time task work and project support and event support. So we helped the Downtown Ithaca Alliance with the Apple Harvest Festival last year. I brought a team of five people. I personally walked 68,000 steps and I'm going to say it every time I have a chance. And we emptied garbages for three days and I was like, am I still adding value? And a person I saw who was first, they just lit up after a couple hours. And so, yes, we are a temp agency. We try to be wherever that company needs us to be because I did corporate work for a long time and the last thing I wanted was another employee. So if that's what they want, then we offer services.
Donna?
Um, are there, are there data available about, um, uh, being able to place your clients in permanent jobs or, or, yeah, permanent jobs, whether the full-time or not?
I haven't been able to yet because again, we only did the pilot project so it's like, but what I give people, like right now, I have somebody working again as an office person at a local place and now they're getting that confidence of being in a, like working in an office. And so now they can, they can, um, they have a higher chance. We really encourage people to move on past us and we just try to, we try to focus on just that initial piece. And I, and we're, I'm trying to, I always try to stay aware of not trying to go for too much, but if we can just focus on being that first step. Because then we, I've seen nothing but people grow from there and I can never anticipate how they're going to grow. Uh, I mean, I like our newest partnership with Ithaca Area Economic Development Council. So people, a lot of people, some people aren't ready for their direct to work program and so they can actually get experience with us to become ready for that direct to workplace. A lot of, we fill that gap of, so much more though. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you, Scott.
Presentation is from West Haven Farm. Um, since you haven't, I don't know if you were watching the live stream, but just so you know, we have two timers. Um, you'll hear music when the timer's up. So if you start hearing music after eight minutes, that means your formal remarks, um, need to be complete, just stop right then. And then you'll have four additional minutes for a Q and A from the board. Okay, good. And whenever you're ready to start speaking, just go ahead and Charles will start the timer.
All right.
And you have to use the microphone.
Thank you. Um, so we are West Haven Farm. Uh, we run, uh, they make us fruits and vegetables, organic and the town of Ithaca. We sell at the Ithaca Farmers Market, Green Star, uh, but we primarily, uh, offer a memberships through our CSA, uh, program. Uh, if you're not familiar with the CSA, it's basically a subscription to our farm. A, they pays, um, 24 weeks a front for fruits and vegetables. Um, these, these prices are a wholesale cost and we offer the, uh, we offer additional free access to our yupec flower, herbs and veggie garden, as well free cooking and preserving tips and, um, weekly recipes through our newsletter. Um, we have, uh, 250 households in our CSA program, including over 100 low-income families, uh, which receive fully subsidized through our, um, food subsidy program. Um, since 1992, West Haven Farm has offered reduced price or free CSA shares to our low-income families through our local nonprofit, uh, Healthy Food For All. In 2024, we stepped away from the organization because we believe the administration cost was too high to compare to our program cost. We have need to go back. Yeah.
Since, uh, since we stepped away from the nonprofit, uh, we received a subaward of a New York State reimbursable grant and private donations. This allowed us to distribute over $130,000 worth of free produce, uh, in 2024. We have a con, well, yesterday we received, uh, notice that our funding through this contract for 2025 is paused. Uh, so we have to update our budget a little bit, but, um, we had $50,000 in committed funds for 2025 through that grant. We do have, uh, private donations that are secured as well for 2025. We're here to apply to fund two subsets of our food subsidy program, uh, our pantry shares and our Latino community shares. Uh, we partner with local organizations, including Southside Community Center, Ithaca Kitchen Cupboard and the Latino Civics Association, uh, to bridge the gap between our farm on West Hill and Ithaca City residents who might not have access to reliable transportation and can't make it to the farm for a weekly share. Our pantry partners prefer a bulk distribution system in order to serve more people. So though we look at the items in terms of shares, um, we're really giving them a diverse array of food that you would expect in a CSA share at a discounted cost to the food pantries, um, so they can distribute, uh, a little bit more freely to their patrons. The Latino farm worker community that the Latino Civics Association helped us to identify, they can't necessarily make it during pantry hours. There might be a language or cultural barrier that prevents them from accessing the pantry. So we offer a little bit more catered service, group sites or home delivery, um, and also more culturally appropriate food, tomateos, poblanos, things that you might not consider a CSA item. And also recipes and cooking classes in Spanish. The pantry style method serves more people than signing up a single member per share. But we can, we're flexible. We run the program in both ways, um, depending on the community need. In total, we're seeking $79,200 in funds to cover our food costs for participating low-income families in the city of Ithaca in 2026. This includes 60 of these pantry style shares, um, which is a combination of a standard vegetable and a standard fruit share offered at a discount, um, and 30 additional fruit shares for our larger Latino families. We recognize that this is a big ask and our program in the city is completely scalable. We're actively seeking other funding sources for 2026 and maybe 2025, it sounds like. We host on-farm event fundraising events every year in benefit of the subsidized CSA share program. We're always looking for grant opportunities and foundation support. Though we're pretty unconventional, there aren't many opportunities for a for-profit agricultural business to cover costs for a service project such as this. And of course, with the current political climate, you really never know. I think it's important to mention that we, we could be selling our produce to Green Star. We could be selling at the Ithaca Farmers Market and we could be choosing to offer produce to people who could have paid full price for the food. But instead, we reserve a piece of our production to provide for the people who can't afford food in our community. We do this because we believe people deserve equal access to healthy, fresh and nutritious produce and we aim to give people that access in a dignified way. So this produce is not the leftovers, it's not food that's past its expiration date, which is what you might typically see as donated produce at a food pantry. It's at its peak freshness and peak nutritional value. It will last for more than a week in somebody's house so they have time to cook it and prepare it and eat it and not be hungry for the rest of the week. As a thriving business with deep ties in communities, we have a unique ability to efficiently and effectively get healthy food to those that need it and boost our local economy with dignified employment. We truly believe in this program and we hope that you consider supporting us. Thank you for your time.
Um, I'm just thinking about, uh, in your presentation, you talked about the food pantry and in the description of the proposal, it talks a little bit more specifically about numbers of households. Is the idea that instead of having this produce at the food pantries, they are in CSA boxes like other folks who engage in CSA, is that the idea? I just was a little confused because of the discussion about the pantries.
Yes, um, the, the way that we started the pantry program was similar to how you might think of a CSA, where you receive a box, it's an individual person who signs up and that person comes to collect it. What we heard feedback from our pantry partners is that they much prefer to display the produce. They, they much prefer to display it so that anybody can grab the food, which makes a lot of sense. A lot of the items aren't familiar to people or some people can't cook, some people can. So we now just deliver that value of share at a discount to the pantry so that they can, people can take what they need. The, the Latino community is a little bit different because we do box individual shares. The families are much larger size, so those families can just take a box and, and go.
So for what you have listed here, Southside Community Center, Ithaca Kitchen Cupboard, you're talking about that quantity of food at a pantry at those locations or?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Groups, uh, we'd see, uh, propose.
All right, Siobhan?
Yeah, um, I was just curious whether you're able to accept SNAP benefits as payment for any of your veggies?
Great question. Um, we, our farm personally, we are not currently set up to accept SNAP. However, we work through the Ithaca Farmers Market so that people can use their benefits there, get the tokens and pay us. We found it's much more simple to run the subsidized CSA program, just saying your share is fully subsidized. When we've asked for partial, uh, you know, partial payment, people find, you know, they really can only afford so much. And so in our minds, it's easiest to say, your share is covered and anything those people can contribute to the farm just rolls back in and pays it forward for the next person, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
How are clients tracked for, uh, income and residency, which is important for our funding?
Right, for, so we can and we do currently send out an enrollment form where people enter their address and they self-identify as low-income. We provide the New York State chart for what that means and people self-attest. For the pantry program in 2024, our food ended up going to many more people than actually signed up through us, which is great. But we, our community pantry partners, they don't track who's coming in and who's coming out. So we have, you know, the 10, the 10 or so participants that initially signed up and then knowing that that food is going to much more people.
Can you just say, um, if you could collaborate with a nonprofit in order to, um, operate this, what were the barriers last time? I know you only have a few seconds, but...
Yeah, in the past, we did through Healthy Food For All, um, the, the administration cost for that program was just really high and so we weren't able to reach as many people with the same budget. So we could ask another nonprofit to apply for us and then they would pay us. We're just floating the administrative, you know, West Haven Farm is essentially donating our administration for a grant, um, which is why we try to apply ourselves if we, if the funding allows it, but...
If there is an organization, I'm happy to partner with them.
Thank you. Anisa? I'm going to call a three-minute break since we're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Hi, um, I wanted to let you know that the board is taking a brief, uh, break right now. It's been a long meeting. So thank you for being here early and I'm going to put the recording on pause and then we'll come back to you. But stay here in the, you can turn off your cameras if you want, you can leave them on, but I just wanted to explain why we're not going to get right into your presentation. Can you hear me okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks, Anisa.
Right, thanks.
All right, so we'll resume our meeting. Uh, next presenter. In fact, our final two presenters will be joining us, uh, online.
So our next presenters are the team from Ultimate Reentry Opportunity, URO. Um, so, uh, for you, I don't know if you're watching on the live stream, but just to explain how this... So for you, I don't know if you're watching on the livestream, but just to explain how this works, is you see two timers. Eight minutes is for your prepared remarks, including questions that you received in advance. And you'll see the eight-minute clock clicking down. When you hear music, that means to stop talking because your time is over for that. If you finish before eight minutes, then the question-and-answer period will begin. You'll have extra time for, for questions and answers. At the end of the eight minutes, the four-minute question-and-answer clock will resume. Same thing at the end, there'll be music, so that's your cue to stop talking. And we'll interrupt you if you continue talking. So, any questions before we start? Okay, as soon as you start talking, Charles will start the clock. And you can see the clock on your screen as well? Okay, all right, very good.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for having the opportunity to present today. My name is Tali Mugambi, and I'm the Project Director of the Ultimate Reentry Opportunity Initiative. On the call, we also have Sadie Crusade, the Operations and Administrative Manager at URO, and Dr. Paula Yulinde, our Project Researcher, Lead Project Consultant. We are committed to removing employment barriers for justice-impacted individuals. People who have been involved in the criminal justice system who face stigma, discrimination, and economic exclusion when trying to re-enter the workforce. Our original application requested sixty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one, but understanding that the public service grant restrictions can only provide funds initiative geared towards LMI individuals, we would like to prioritize receiving funds amounting to twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the navigational support specialist position, which would support employees in reentry to stay, grow, and thrive in their workplaces. This work matters because justice-impacted folks face twenty-seven percent unemployment rate, and this is higher than the Great Depression. In Tompkins County, we also estimate approximately twenty-six thousand individuals, adults, have a criminal record, making them very vulnerable to long-term joblessness, poverty, and housing instability. These aren't just statistics. They represent real people in our community who are being shut out of economic opportunities. We know the Beyond the Box Initiative works because we have saw the results firsthand from our twenty-twenty-four pilot at Moosewood Restaurant. Before the intervention, justice-involved, justice-involved individual, individuals struggled to retain employment. They faced discrimination and financial instability. Employers lacked the tools to provide a supportive workplace environment. Now, after the intervention, eighty-five percent of individuals reported feeling more included in the workplace. Retention rates improved, and workplace culture became more equitable and sustainable. That's proof that when you remove barriers, this benefits all employees, employers, and the local economy. Next up, we'll have Paula, Dr. Paula, talk to you about how our project works.
So as Tali mentioned, we're requesting twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to fund what we're calling the navigational support specialist position. But the initiative is really much more holistically conceptualized and involves revisiting policies and procedures with the employer to enhance the workplace so that it becomes more inclusive to people in reentry. What this means is essentially that we do technical assistance for the employer to improve hiring practices with respect to people with past criminal records, as well as retention practices so that they treat people fairly and equitably. In terms of justice-impacted individuals, we also understand that essentially there are, the broader workplace culture has to be supportive and not stigmatizing of those with past justice system involvement. So some of the trainings in the initiative are for all employees to better understand the barriers that people in reentry face when they re-acclimate to employment opportunities, but it has the benefit of really enhancing the workplace culture for people with any kind of marginalized or stigmatized position. The piece that we're focusing on today, the navigational support specialist, does one-on-one support with those people who self-identify themselves as wanting that support or currently at that employer, who essentially say, yes, I would like some more assistance to do better in my job, to often mitigate those other structural factors that impede on people in reentry to not be able to effectively sustain and retain their work. And I'll pass it to Sadie to add some other key questions.
Okay, moving on to the question, is IURA our only funding source? I would just like to clarify that in the budget submitted, the navigational support specialist position was referred to as workforce development consultant. URO has already secured fifteen thousand dollars from a private donation for Beyond the Box, and we are actively pursuing other funding for this initiative, including applying to the Legacy Foundation Grant in April for ten thousand dollars and applying to the Tompkins County Human Services Committee in May for around twenty-six thousand dollars. Back to Paula.
To address the question of whether the training, is the training for employers or employees, the important component of all trainings is that they are geared towards employees. The employer aspect that we do support for is strictly for policies and procedures. The training components address that broader workplace culture in which all employees will be trained, and then there will be some trainings that are really focused on how the, how to essentially navigate non-inclusive behaviors towards people in reentry. So the initiative has this dual focus, but all trainings are for employees. We also wanted to address why Ithaca College is not listed as a collaborator. We have been in preliminary discussions with Ithaca College Dining to be a partner because we were looking for a bigger mid-size employer with which to scale the initiative from what we learned from Moosewood. However, it's a kind of catch-22. Employers want to know how much funding we have to do this work in order to commit. And so we wanted, although we have very promising commitments, part of what we're looking for is to secure some additional funding before we go to our employers with a clear picture of the resources that they would have to allocate towards the entire initiative. If for some reason Ithaca College does not necessarily pan out, we also want to just be very clear that from our Beyond the, the Box Initiative Summit, we had many very interested employers who want to do this with us, including Reach Medical, Gimme Coffee, United Way, Tompkins County Workforce Development, and Cornell University Dining. And I'll pass it back to Paula.
Thank you, Paula. And that summit that she just referred to happened approximately three weeks ago on February thirteenth, so this is invigorating news. So how will we measure success? And we really look at this in, in, by, by the rate of increased hiring for justice-involved individuals, hopefully over ten percent, increased retention of justice-involved hires who maintain employment or achieve better opportunities within the local economy. Success will also be defined by our ability to deliver greed-upon trainings with the employer to improve their individualized workplace culture. And we also expect to see improved workplace inclusion scores increase by ten percent or better, measured from the pre and post-employee surveys. This matters, right? And we really believe that everyone deserves a fair chance at employment and economic stability, and by breaking down these hiring barriers and providing essential workplace support for the reenterers, the Beyond the Box Initiative is creating real and lasting change for justice-involved individuals, employers, and. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present.
Great, so we'll start the four-minute Q and A from board members now.
Questions? Okay, well, most of our committee's questions were answered. I did have one, if I can find it. Oh, yes. Thank you for updating us on the funding and the, the funding, new funding that's been requested. But there's still a long way to go to meet your budget. So could you talk about the impact on the program with reduced funding from this agency?
So, as we stated, so our, our first go-around, our pilot, was supported by the Tompkins County Human Services Committee, in which we were granted, I can't, I can't remember the exact number, I think it's thirty-seven thousand. Obviously, this is gonna be a little bit bigger project than Moosewood, but we're still gonna reach out to them, the Legacy Foundation, and to continue doing some fundraising and potential, you know, local fundraising to request support for this initiative.
And I'll just add that if we, if we get reduced funding, we may need to just scale to a smaller employer. The goal for this was to go to a mid-size employer, but we could achieve similar results with a smaller employer.
Thank you. Siobhan?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I was curious if you had any information about how the recent news from CTA might influence the programs that you offer?
Which recent news are you referring to?
The Center for Transformative Action, talking about potentially not being able to offer funding in upcoming years.
So what that, that, that funding, that really doesn't, that's their operations, that, that really impact their operations, which means that, that the relationship between, what, 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 what has happened is, is that Cornell University traditionally has provided support to CTA for their administrative support for organizations like us. We're already seeing the administrative costs go up. So for us, it has been at eight percent. It'll now be at ten percent for our overall administrative costs. And we incorporate those, those changes in our budget requests for when we're submitting grant applications.
Thank you.
Sharon?
Hi, just one quick question. Thanks for such a great presentation. Can you tell us a little bit about how you find the small employers?
So, just as Paula kind of alluded to earlier, we, so we had this pilot that we ran, and we invited employers, local employers, to come out, also the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Ithaca Alliance. And we presented on this information, and so when we presented, we did a survey afterwards. We had about eight employers that were seriously interested in moving forward with the initiative. And so for us, it's about outreach, putting the information out there, and, and bringing on those willing employers.
And just to add to that, with smaller employers, the initiative is easier to implement because they tend to be more flexible. With larger-scale employers, policies, for example, are harder to change. So with smaller employers, it's, it's more flexible, but with bigger employers, the impact is broader.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so next, our final presenters for the day. We're a team from Black Hands Universal to speak about their career resources program. We have Harry and Gladys here. I just wanted to explain quickly, because Gladys hasn't been here for this bit yet. There's eight minutes for the formal presentation, including any questions that you want to address at the committee you provided earlier, and then four minutes for Q and A after your presentation, which may include follow-up questions on, you know, or whatnot, or brand-new questions. So if you start hearing music, that means the time is up, and so please stop, and we'll go to the Q and A. You can begin anytime you're ready to speak. The timer, the timer will start when you do. Gladys, you're on mute, and so is Harry.
That'll catch you up every time. Hi, I'm Gladys Brangman with Business Leaders of Colors, but I am here to support the proposal for Black Hands Universal. BHU's goal is to develop a coalition with the trades and skilled laborers. The intention is to help guide graduates through the hiring process and start one of the apprenticeship programs or begin moving forward to begin their careers. With union jobs as our target population, we can see a drastic increase in their ability to support their families. BHU expects to serve at least fifteen people. Black Hands Universal's work service program is a platform for minorities and low-income community members within the city of Ithaca and surrounding areas to launch into the trade and skilled labor arena. They are working with local businesses to contract with them to construct new facilities and renovations in the city and surrounding areas. This will allow program participants to receive hands-on training. Their purpose is to give the participants the skills necessary to feed into jobs within the city of Ithaca, Tompkins County, private sector opportunities, as well as the local trades and unions. In facilitating a nonprofit construction management and labor skills union, BHU can have a lasting effect and impact on the community. They will source materials locally, employing the community and stimulating the local economy while providing critical services to the community. BHU's work services will come alongside with their partners to build new facilities in the health, education, green energy, residential, commercial, and economic construction sectors. From design to project close, they want to serve as the minority and low-income representative at every step of the process. Every person, regardless of where they live, where they are from, or what their ethnicity is, should have access to upward mobility, opportunity, and a real chance in spaces where they can thrive. BHU has managed to create a paid field training program. They are working with local businesses to contract with them to construct new facilities and renovations in the city and surrounding areas. This will allow our participants to receive hands-on training in different fields of the trades, giving them the basic skills necessary. This career resources project has been designed to be a one-stop shop that will cover everything, from help with documentation such as social security cards, IDs, birth records, to driver's licenses. During this pre-apprenticeship program, the participants will be involved in financial classes, credit classes, home buying education, as well as business classes. GEDs will also be available for those who need them. All participants will also have access to tutoring to help them with the aptitude test given prior to entering the trades. This will allow participants to have an overall understanding of how to function at a higher level in life and give them the upward mobility they need. Also, we have taken time to think about the intensity of the recidivism rate of minorities. The inability to help, guidance, or on-the-road-to dependable jobs and resources has been one of the largest reasons as to why so many people of color have been returning to incarceration. Having a relationship with local parole and probation departments, as well as the courts and programs, gives us an advantage to being able to reach this demographic and to change the direction of individual lives. We hope that this will also become a springboard to the meeting of families and individual lives and turning point in their transition. Does this project require coordination? Yes, it does. This project is targeted to serve low-income community members, and most of the participants are in the lower eighty percent AMI. You had asked questions, and we'd like to address those now. And the first question, do you have the capacity for this program and your housing proposal? Yes, the two programs coincide with one another, and the housing actually opens more opportunities for learning. Is this program exclusive to people who want to go into trades? No, the program is designed to help community members find employment or even venture into small business ownership, but their specific training is geared towards the trade and building maintenance. What clients have as a baseline level of skills to enter the program, or will you take time to train people with no prior skills? We will definitely take those with no prior skills. And those who have prior skills, we will try. And those who have prior skills, we will try to get them further certified and/or help them find employment. And yes, the Village of Ithaca is our fiscal sponsor, and they will be handling BHU's reporting requirements and will assist with all IURA reports. Harry, would you like to share any other information?
Nah, you, you hit everything.
Okay. Then at this point, I guess we could go to, uh, Q and A?
Yes.
Are there, for first, uh, thank you, uh, Gladys and Harry. You pretty much answered all the questions that our committee had. Uh, but are there other questions? I think, I saw your hand, Cheyenne.
Hi, yes, thanks for the presentation. Can you tell us a little bit more about this, uh, collaboration with the village, um, and the, uh, administrative side?
Basically, we, as we started to work with, um, the Village of Ithaca, Merrill has given me a lot of input, and Cat also, on how they run their paperwork and they run all of their stuff. And now what we do is, of course, the people that are on the ground, boots on the ground, they have to do their part. And we'll take that and, um, put it all together, and then we'll give it to, um, Merrill and Cat. And they'll be able to handle and help us to make sure that every T is crossed and every I is dotted before actually handing in our work to, um, IURA, which is definitely helpful.
I just, before you, I just wanted to clarify that, um, Merrill is the executive director of the village and Cat is the financial manager.
Yes.
Yeah, that's just signaling a four-minute period for Q and As beginning. Any question? If somebody comes, um, because I've heard about the program, they're not interested in getting into the trades, how would the program address that?
Um, we still help out with soft skills, um, all the things around it, as far as the financial literacy with ACU, the business, if that's what they are in tune to with Gladys, um. And if they're just, like, we've helped plenty of people that just were like, listen, I need a job. And we use the connections that we have and the other organizations and resources that we have, and we help that person to find a job. At times, we might have to help them, uh, fix their resume or introduce them, just to get them that one step further into being able to be hired, um. We've done a lot of trade work, um, oriented things, but we've also, we've had, um, work, we have, we've had job fairs and had people get jobs at Ithaca College, Cornell, um, TCAD, and so on and so forth. So now I won't stop right there. We want to help people to actually find, um, employment.
Hi, I just wanted to better understand from the participant's point of view. So it was like an eight-week training program. What kind of time commitment do you expect, or contact time do you expect, uh, on a weekly basis with the participants in the program?
It, honestly, twenty to thirty hours probably out of the week. But some, some people come in with a lot of the things that they need, just missing one or two things. Some people come in with everything they need and just need a connection. Some people come in with more skills than others, so, or more certifications than others. So everybody's not on the exact same timeline, but that timeline that you see is the timeline created going from zero to, um, preparation for employment.
Okay, thanks.
Knowing that, um, the public services area, uh, category is capped, um, and at, uh, just at the, at the most, at just under a hundred thousand dollars for all of the proposals put together, could we ask if we, uh, could not fully fund your project, how would it be scaled? Given the, um, sort of staffing makes up the bulk of the, of the, of the, uh, request?
Well, honestly, I would have to continue being the one to take the, um, the first step and, uh, be the one to be there more and, um, actually do the training rather than being able to have other people find employment through working with us and being able to be there for me. But we would still be able to find a way to make it all work as we have in the past few years.
Okay, thank you both very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just have a great and wonderful day.
No, we're still recording. The meeting's still in progress.
So that was the end of our second half of our public hearing. Um, typically, we do just have a vote to adjourn the public hearing as well on the board working. A solid move that we adjourned, public hearing? Did I get the button down here? Okay, all in favor? Right, thank you. So, next steps?
Next steps. Um, so next steps, um, you got the presentation or the schedule, I think, at your places. Next week, Neighborhood Investment will meet again to do their second, kind of, second round of reviewing um, and start, uh, talking about how much they would like to see allocated to each project. This process usually takes two meetings, so there's another meeting scheduled for the Friday after that. And we come back to, I, and Economic Development Committee will do that too on Tuesday. Um, and then we come back to the IRA board, uh, with the recommendations of the committees. IRA discusses it. They may need one meeting or they may need two. Um, then after that, there'll be a thirty-day public comment period on the, what the recommendations have been in the draft plan. Then, um, Common Council will consider the recommended plan in June to either adopt it or make, make changes. Um, I guess they could do that, and I think that has happened in the past. And then we submit the plan to HUD on June fifteenth.
So one of the, um, things that we do every year, of course, is contingency resolution. So if we get more funds from HUD in either category or fewer funds, I think it would be wise this year to have a, a part of the contingency if, if zero funds come in from HUD. Does that make sense?
That's an easy contingency. Uh, although we do have some program, program income from loan repayments, so that would still be available to allocate.
So that's about a hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm sorry, how much?
Hundred and sixty thousand?
Okay.
So that would be all. There would be no home funding, if they allocated zero. That, that's the, that's the amount that would be available.
So, uh, I'm sorry, the programming, the program income would be CDBG funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Without getting into specifics, we also have to keep in mind that the, um, you know, IURA staff is also dependent on the HUD allocation. That's just the programs. So we could also think about that.
No.
Always thinking about that. Yeah, I mean, we can only utilize so much funding from CDBG and Home for administrative expenses. So that's a formula, uh, uh, limitation. So we have to look at our budget. When you see the audit, um, coming out, there'll be a discussion of, uh, future factors impacting the agency, and, um, it addresses some of those issues in terms of what if the federal funding is less than what we've received, um, historically. So it'll be teed up for discussion that way, I think, one way to do it. Um, last year, just to go back to the process for a second, last year, we moved to, uh, a process in which the Economic Development Committee brought the recommendation or shared the recommendation with the Neighborhood Investment Committee, and the hope being that they could somehow be incorporated into the Neighborhood Investment Committee's recommendation to the IRA. There's always opportunity for people to, you know, change those, uh, on the floor of the agency or something, but that was, that seemed like it was a reasonably good process that worked, uh, to feed that in, because the ED Committee is scheduled to meet next Tuesday. And so it's before your first NIC meeting on Friday, next Friday, I think. And then there's a second NIC meeting typically as well. Um, so if, I think that's a good approach to try and see if that works out. The challenge always is the Economic Development Committee asks how much, how much can we allocate to the economic development activities out of the, you know, uh, assumed or anticipated funds? And my answer always is, it depends, because the, the home funds have to go for housing activity. So it's really only a question of how much of the Community of Own Black Grant should be allocated to the economic development categories relative to, we can assume that public services can't go above ninety-five thousand. Um, but the housing ones are, there's pretty robust demands for, for request in the housing category. So, um, that's something the ED Committee will have to struggle with. And I think in a prior year, they kind of prioritized, uh, programs as well. Uh, so we'll, we'll try to figure out some, some approach to bring a recommendation, uh, from the Economic Development Committee to the NIC.
And remind me, the, um, public facilities, that's CDBG funds also? All right. Any other questions regarding the process? Okay. Any further business? No? All right, so make a motion to adjourn this meeting? Seconded by Cheyenne on the favor. Aye. Thank you. This, this one went very smoothly.